Only one of them will think that's.
I better start working on my kids and sell them out before they move out.
Of course, who says that clock?
True.
That's pretty close.
I did twenty years.
Oh, you got some scouts.
Okay.
Oh, look at that, they're scouts, so we don't even have, they can do the pledge.
You guys want to do the pledge of allegiance?
We're ready, if you'd like to, Steve.
Okay, when we get there, I'll ask you to do that.
Sounds great, thank you.
That's good.
You guys.
Came and put in the work. You show up and at least you had to work. Okay, this is the time and place set for the Roy City Planning Commission meeting that has been duly posted and published according to law. We will start this meeting with a pledge of allegiance. If one of the scouts will come up, or all of you come up, and lead us in the pledge, please. Right through there, stand right behind that table and start us off. Right there is fine, just line up. At your convenience.
Um, please rather have your hands closed, um, please repeat their pledge of allegiance again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, first item is, are there any conflicts by any members of the planning commission? There being none, we will proceed to item number two, which is approval of the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen regular meeting minutes. Since we have no minutes to approve, I ask for a motion to table.
I move that we table the minutes approval.
Second. Got a second, we're all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes.
Chair, with Brian not here, do you want to bring up Don?
Is Don here?
Yeah.
Yes. Don is an alternate commissioner, and so he gets his baptism tonight.
Welcome.
Good luck. Okay, this is the time set for us to consider a request to amend the following maps for the property located approximately fifty-one, fifty-four south, twenty-seven hundred west. It is asking us to change the general plan from medium density, single-family residential to very high-density, multiple-family residential, and to change the zoning map from one R-eight, I'm sorry, R-one-eight, single-family residential to R-three, multiple-family residential. Is the proponent here tonight. Please come up, stand behind this microphone, speak loudly, and talk to us.
All right, my name is Doug Terry, and I own the property here, me and my wife. I've owned that property for probably over thirty years, long time. I've seen a lot of changes. When I first moved there, I could ride my horse pretty well anywhere around there. I could shoot my shotgun below the second set of railroad tracks.
Well.
There's been a lot of change since then. It used to be a dirt road to the aquatic center. So, why we're asking for change is to put in some multi-family units to cater to an elderly population that want to retire, do not want a big yard, they want to have something small, we'll have an HOA there. As you can see in the map, everything west of me, for the most part, is storage units currently. Everything else west of me is zoned industrial.
Okay.
Everything kitty-corner to me, to the southwest, is industrial, or fourplexes there. To the east of me is the railroad. To the north, to the north of me, I own the next property with the home I own there. Past that is my sister's house. She texted me today, and she's all for this, to move forward. We're not building apartment complexes. I think there's sometimes a thing, a stigmatism, that, you know, we're wanting to build apartment complex, low-income, high-crime units. This is going to be very high-end, very nice units. As you can see, I gave you all a copy, what we are planning on building.
Do you have that on the TV monitor?
No, she just barely gave it.
Okay.
I just barely gave it to you, sorry about that. But I've also gave that to my neighbors, which a lot of them are here tonight. There's a street light at forty-eight-hundred, there's a street light at fifty-six-hundred, there's a road heading west of there, there's plenty of traffic flowing and out of there. We will maintain the property with an HOA, so it'll be a nice unit. I believe that's all I have to say at this time. You guys have any questions for me?
Any members of the board have a question for him at this point?
All right.
Go ahead.
You mentioned you want to cater to the older folks. Is this going to be a retirement community, like fifty-five older, or is it going to be open to everyone?
Currently, it's open to everybody, but I envision a lot of elderly people signing up for it as I talk, and a lot of people are already interested in buying. A lot of them would like to retire there.
Thank you.
How many units are we looking at putting in there?
Well, I have three acres total there. I'm only proposing to rezone two acres of that. And at that rezoning, you could put up the twenty-four townhomes or twenty-four units there. But there's also, Roy City and Weaver Basin have a water line going through there that I need to work around.
So are you just going to keep the other acre then for yourself at the time?
Correct, yes. Probably mostly on courtesy to my sister that lives next to that, to the north. Just, she likes to have a little, I got a farm right there, a little vacant lot and an orchard.
Anything else you want to tell us at this point?
Um, not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parkinson?
Um, as it goes, as he mentioned, this is to rezone, or to amend the general plan from medium-density, single-family homes to very high-density, multi-family homes. Verbiage is verbiage, it really comes down to the number of units. As he's mentioned, you know, it's about two acres. Our ordinance allows for twelve units per acre on that, in that zone, but we're not here to talk about a site plan, we're not here to talk about those type of things. It's the general plan and the rezone. He's provided, you know, some ideas of what it could look like, but those things haven't come in front of this body or in front of staff to be able to review to say, yeah, you can have twenty-four units. It may be something less, just because of the number, you know, the amount of landscaping to impervious surface that you have to have. So those type of things, we, you know, you just take into consideration that it's townhomes. Of course, you can make that part of your approval, the caveat that, you know, we recommend approval if it is what you're going to do, that townhomes are the only thing built, not apartments. So, just like we did last time, you can make that recommendation. So, the property is located just on, what, fifty-one, fifty-four, south, twenty-seven hundred west, about two acres of vacant land. Currently, general plan-wise, as mentioned, it's to look, it's to be medium-density, single-family. There is, across the street, you do have manufacturing that's presently being used as manufacturing, but general plan-wise, it says it to be low-density, single-family homes. So already, we're, you know, we got conflict there. I don't see the, the storage units going anywhere in the near, you know, thirty, forty years.
Right.
So, that type of thing, you've got to look at as well, is you do have a mixed use of property usage there with the single-family homes, the fourplexes kind of kitty-corner, the storage units, so, you know, is his request really, you know, is it out of the ordinary? When you look at the zoning map and the general plan map, yeah, it looks kind of odd. Be an odd thing to have in that, in that area. But again, even in the general plan, the future land use map, you have R-three, or very high-density residential kitty-corner to it, so it is in the area. Zoning-wise, again, this is where you see the conflict between the general plan and the existing zoning. The purple is light manufacturing. So you even have single-family homes in the light manufacturing zone that could sell, be demolished, and then you have a business that comes in the area. So traffic-wise, it could be, you know, commercial-wise could be, I should say, manufacturing-wise, a lot heavier than it is, just because of the way the zoning is. Again, you do have R-three in the area, just kitty-corner from this property, of course, to the north, south, and to the east, it is zoned R-one-eight.
Where are the R-three zones? You said they're kitty-corner.
That's kind of orange.
They're the orange zones, okay.
Uh, the dark green is RE-twenty, twenty thousand square foot lot. Then, like, the purple is light manufacturing.
Thank you.
So staff's recommendation would be to approve with any conditions that the planning commission sees to put on it.
Okay. I will open the meeting for public hearing.
Give a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we open up the public hearing for the, uh, for the property located at fifty-one, fifty-four, south, twenty-seven hundred west.
I'll second it. All in favor, uh, no. Real call.
All in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is now open to the public. Anyone that wants to tell us anything, please come up to the microphone, state your name and where you live, and tell us what's on your mind. Don't all come up at one time.
Hello, my name's Donald Jackson, and I live at fifty-one, ninety-three, south, twenty-nine, twenty-five, west, which is just approximately just two blocks west from where your property's at. And I just got this on my door today. It was just rolled up on my door, and what got my attention was, somebody felt it necessary to underline very high-density, you know, making a big point about that, and I saw that when I came up. Because I've been, I've lived in Roy for thirty years, I've had the same house, it's on the corner, right across the street from the golf course, and when they built that, there was a lot of controversy at that time, putting in the house and causing a lot of trouble, but around this area, those two apartments, when I moved in there thirty years ago, they were pretty good apartments, but if you look at them now, they're not. And if you go up to fifty-six-hundred, where they just built, I don't know how big that complex is, it's huge. And so I don't know how many more apartments we need, and just down the road, they're building three more, right across the street on fifty-one-hundred, three, three buildings more. But I don't blame the guy for wanting to get what he can out of his property, but I don't know about, you know, I'd have to have something like, some assurances that it's not going to turn into a bunch of junk apartments again.
We're not even supposed to build apartments.
Well, I, they say that, you know, but then, I don't know if they're going to be one-level patio homes, I don't know very many old people, I'm sixty-four years old, and I don't know if they need any kind of townhouse with stairs, and if they're a patio-type home, or something like, that would attract that type of people. If they're just going to be braiding pants, I don't want it. And that's all I got to say.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, for your information, and for anybody else that is here, outside of the property, there has been a sign posted, it's a blue sign that sits out front, that tells about this special meeting. I have no idea who put that on your door today, okay, but the posting has done according to law.
Well, by ordinance, we're required to send out letters to those who are within three hundred feet of the property. So the letter they would have received also would have had a map on the back. I didn't underline anything within the letter, so that.
So that comes from somebody else other than us?
Sounds like it was photocopied and done by someone else.
Okay. But every time we have something that is a zoning change or whatnot, we do post at the property, or right in front of the property.
Yeah, it was stuck on my door today, rolled up inside my, you got the same thing?
No, 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 no. But I saw what you had.
Somebody made a big point about.
Yes, they did.
Very high-density, multi-family, multi-family residential, and the first thing that ran through my head, we're going to have a bunch of more rat-trap apartments built in Roy. We don't need any more of those.
Thank you for your comments. Does anybody else want to speak? Come on up, same, same rules, your name and your address.
My name is Eduardo Robles, I live directly south of the property, and I also oppose that idea of building multi, very high-density, as it says on the paper. I lived here for, and that house directly south, twenty-six, ninety-seven, west, fifty-three, fifty, south, which is directly south of it. And I also don't like the idea of the high-density, very high-density, to me, it just sounds like a bunch of duplexes, or whatever. I have no problem with, with building residential, single-family homes, I have no problem with that, but the very high-density, that's what scares a lot of people, and I oppose the idea also. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mel Swartz, I live at fifty-eighty-five, south, twenty-seven hundred west. I'm actually the green blob in the middle of the light manufacturing.
Congratulations.
We had to get that property rezoned in order to restore the nineteen-twelve farmhouse that was on there.
Cool.
That one, yes, the old Doyle property. We did this in twenty-sixteen, Mr. Terry actually did deliver the handout, that was very nicely done, and I do feel that he has done an extensive amount of research, and I think that he has very, very good intentions. I understand it's going to get developed at some point. I'd really love just, I would love to buy her hayfield and hay for my horses, maybe we should, but I can't be the developer, I can tell you that now. But I would not like to see high-density housing in that area, although this area here is listed as light manufacturing, and I believe there's a few of my other neighbors that are in the lavender section, it's mostly single-family homes with an occasional shop in there. And the future use map does support that all becoming RE-twenty, and the area where the hayfield is, and I'm sorry, I just always refer that in my mind, I apologize, is going to be single-family homes in the future use map, so going to the high-density housing, besides, I think it'll adversely impact the traffic on that road and the quality of life of the residents, overall, it's not going to be consistent with what the future land use map looks like. We have seen some impacts on traffic, I've only lived there since twenty-fourteen, but since they put in the subdivision over there, across just north forty-eight-hundred, in between the tracks and West Park, we're seeing a lot more traffic come through as they make their right turn, whip through the roundabout, and then scream down twenty-seven hundred, down to fifty-six frequently, and God forbid the trains on the track, you know. I don't support it going to very high-density housing. I, I do understand that, yes, you're going to want to sell that, I know how long you've farmed it, and you deserve, you know, what you can get. I just recently had to sell my mom's estate. But I just think that keeping it as single-family homes would be the more appropriate zoning for that than going to high-density housing. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Kevin Mays, I live at fifty-one, twelve, south, twenty-seven hundred west. I'm, I'm just three lots north of the property that Doug is proposing to do this. We were, we were here last year in front of, was last year, right? Twenty-sixteen, twenty-sixteen to do this, and at that time, we didn't really have a clear picture of what, what Doug had intended to do with these townhomes, and, and a lot of us, there was a lot of people that were voicing against that. At this time, Doug's taking time to hand out a flyer and show his intention of that, and it was very comforting when our city planner here, Mr. Parkinson, said that you guys can attach a, attach a approval restriction, approval.
Approval with conditions.
With conditions.
Okay.
I'm, I totally support the idea of these townhomes. These are homes, they're not, not apartments. Like Doug has gone very far out of his way to say what his intentions are, and I keep hearing people come up here and talk about apartments. Townhomes with an HOA is something that I think goes right along with the newsletter that Mayor Dandoys sent out here just a little bit ago about it, with a vision statement saying that he wants Roy to be a place where people want to work, live, and play. Townhomes with an HOA right here, that's in line with that. I totally support that. Me, my wife, our four kids, live to the, three houses, the, three houses to the north, three lots to the north from that, and I, I'm just fine, I'm just fine with those intentions. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. We're still open.
My name is David Tracy, and I live at fifty-one, twenty-five, south, twenty-seven hundred west, just across the street on twenty-seven hundred from Doug's property. You know, I've just got a, kind of a general question, do, you know, I mean, the citizens here really don't know what high-density means. You see what I'm saying? I think it's, what is it, Doug, like, two acres you've got there?
Yes.
So, in the two acres, how many townhomes would be built there? I mean, you know, it's hard for us to decide one way or the other, whether we're for it or against it, if we really don't know what's going to happen. And, and maybe Doug hasn't, you haven't got a finished site plan and that kind of stuff?
I gave all the commissioners a site plan that I have roughly drawn up.
Well, then, you know, what are we talking about? How many units would be there?
The maximum you can do is twenty-four.
Twenty-four units.
Is maximum.
Just a second.
It's a public hearing, not a question, answering questions.
I understand.
So we can answer all questions after.
Afterwards, but go ahead. So your concern is, how many units would be on development?
Yeah, well, I mean.
Okay, we'll answer that question before we leave.
Oh, okay, well, I arrived late, so I guess I missed it, but that was one of my main concerns, you know. Doug is a great guy, and, and I hope that he can use his property, you know, to his best advantage, but we also don't want, you know, an awful lot of, uh, more residents in a small confined area either, you know, so. But twenty-four units would be, that would be twenty-four families and twenty-four, maybe, what, fifty cars more, something like that?
Something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Hi, how are you?
We're good.
My name's Brenda Nelson, I'm in Harrisville, is it okay if I speak?
You're the public, go ahead.
Fifteen-seventy-eight North, two-twenty-five West. I am the broker at Better Homes and Gardens, and I've been working with Doug for several years on this project, so I wanted to talk to you a little bit about our, our communities and about our, what we're dealing with as Realtors. We have a very short supply of housing right now. We are lacking affordable housing, and I think that's what Doug's trying to bring to your community, is affordable housing. I just, I have some documentation that our legislature just passed a bill on moderate-income housing, and I'm going to read that real quick. House Bill two-fifty-nine starts this process by requiring cities to implement a plan for addressing affordability in their communities. Specifically, these plans require cities to allow and plan for growth in moderate-income housing. So I just kind of want you to keep that in mind, that we're really working on this on a state level and a national level to bring more affordability to our, our younger generations as well. The inventory in Roy is very low. I did a search before I came here, price range one-fifty to two-hundred, there's one property. Two-hundred to two-fifty, there are eight properties. So I think this would be a great asset for the city, and I think, again, to remind the public, you're just doing a rezone, and Doug is going to have to come back and get approval for his community, so there's, I'm sure there's no way you guys are going to allow high-density apartments in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, excuse me, I'm Lori Jones, and I'm from North Ogden, twenty-eight, forty, North, eight hundred East. I'm from Prime Lending, and I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what Brenda had to say. There are so many borrowers that I have that want to be in the Roy community, and as soon as I find out what their financials, financials are, there's just no way I can get them anywhere near Roy. A lot of these people either are the tail end of the baby boomers, where they've missed out on the pension, and they just have their social security, that's all they have. For me to try to find them a house out in Roy has been really, really difficult. Also, same thing with our millennials, because they've kind of hit the job, they've gotten their jobs after college when the economy was a little bit down. So I think having affordable homes in the Roy area is amazing, and I have seen some of Doug's plans, and I think it's really what we need right now in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Wendy Packer, and I live west of Doug's property, and I'm, we got horses, and we have a hard time, as it is right now, trying to get our horse trailer and truck backed up into our driveway to unload horses. Not only that, just before we came up here, my husband almost witnessed a kid getting hit going out into the street on a bike. We don't need any more traffic, and the more he can fit in there, the more traffic we are going to have on that road, and when the trains block that intersection, it'll back up clear from fifty-six-hundred, cleared to almost forty-eight. And one of them wants to know how much these townhomes are going to go for, the price of them. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time?
My name is Tim Higgs, I live at fifty-three, eighty-one, south, thirty-four hundred west, and I've lived in Roy my whole life. My mother still lives on fifty-five, sixty-nine, south, twenty-seven hundred west, which is just south of these properties, and where these would be intended. I think the history of this request has some merit to it as well. I also was involved in a public hearing on August second, twenty-sixteen, with the same request, with the same merit, with the same opposition from the local neighbors. And at that point in time, it was approved by the planning commission, but the same opposition, a couple of weeks later, in city council, six to one denied it. There was six council members that said, you know, well, I'll just quote, the council said, based on the council's desire for property remain single-family, and the opposition from the neighborhood, we, we are denying the motion, and there were six that voted for denial and one that voted for approval. I, I think this is compounded by traffic. Traffic is, and it's difficult to think of it, because I remember, just as these folks have stated, thirty, forty, fifty years ago, I rode my bicycle down those streets and perhaps had a car every five to ten minutes. Now there's a car every five to ten microseconds. And so much so that we, this year, had to move my mother's mailbox from the east side of the road over to the west side of the road, because I didn't dare let her cross the street to get her mail. So I am totally against additional traffic, and we're talking another fifty cars, perhaps, fifty cars a day coming out and coming in, and that comp- And that compounded with the transportation, statewide transportation improvement program. I don't know how many of you noticed, but as recent as October of twenty seventeen, just this last October, the intersection of forty-eight hundred and twenty-seven hundred has now reached the top ten most dangerous rail crossings. And UDOT is seeking to say, to apply safety upgrades within the twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty-two state barred transportation program, which could deal with potential removal of the forty-eight hundred left turn, left-hand turn lane coming down forty-eight, turning left on the twenty-seven. That's dangerous and I don't, I don't oppose and I don't, I totally understand where they're coming from. We've had multiple car accidents there. We've had three that I know of, train accidents, one involving a bus. And if, if that closes, we're down to the scenario where you go down to the roundabout, you come back up, you hope a train's not there, you turn right to come on to twenty-seven.
We'll cross that train track when we get there. But you're against, you're against this tonight.
Understand, but we are, we are facing today a scenario where the, the, the National Transportation Improvement Program is saying between twenty-seventeen and twenty-twenty-two, that intersection will change. So we need to come into this with that knowledge.
We have it.
Within a few years, we could be forcing everybody over to fifty-six hundred on a road that's already too congested. So that's, that's the concern that I have and a little bit of history. Totally understanding both, both sides of the, of the equation here.
Thank you for the history and the information, appreciate it. Is there anyone else? Yes ma'am?
Good evening, my name is Janee Terry. I live at twenty-five oh nine West, fifty-one seventy-five South, I'm Doug's wife. And Doug's roots run really deep with this property. He's farmed it all these years and it was actually his grandparents that owned that little home with forty acres. And they farmed it and so, and we lived down there for quite a few years and we loved the neighbors there. That's why when we have been researching this and talking about this, we want it to be nice, we want it to be something that they're proud to have in their neighborhood. And that's one of the reasons we talked about doing an HOA, is because that ensures that it can't be ratty and that, you know, people can't have all their mess everywhere. So that, that's our, our concern is also, we do want it to be nice for the neighbors there, because we do care about them.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lyle Biddle. I live at fifty-two forty-nine South, on twenty-seven hundred. And my aged mother lives right across the street from the property. One of my big concerns is, is on his little thing, it said anticipated luxury living with homeowners association. That doesn't sound that, really that positive to me. But I think my biggest concern is, we're gonna be putting a whole bunch of concrete right across the street from my mother's house. When my father built that house, sixty years, seventy years ago, it was level with the street. Well, they got the street four feet higher than it now. With all that concrete going in there, where is all that water gonna go? Right into my mother's front yard. That kinda concerns me. Also, like I said, I've lived on that street for the best part of sixty years, saw, saw all of the changes that went on there. Well before the manufacturing ever even showed up there. And a whole bunch of rezoning, been to a lot of these meetings. So, yeah, the traffic is a big concern also. I've seen it go from, from, we played, we played baseball in the streets down there when I was a kid, 'cause there were no cars. And now it's, now it's, you can't get out of your driveway for three or four minutes sometimes in all the traffic. So I, I don't wanna see a big traffic improvement. I would love to see, see some, something nice go in there. As long as it's not this, this high-density, high, high-density stuff that, that we're having to deal with across the street on fifty-two hundred.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else? I think we have, we have one more.
Hello, my name's Gary Davis. I live at fifty-two fourteen South, twenty-seven hundred West, directly south of the Terry property. I just had a couple of questions for Janee and Doug. Because of the property, we're right buddying each other, what is your thoughts on the winrow of trees right there?
We, we do not do question and answers here. If you've got some comments to make, we're more than willing to listen. Later on, I'll give everybody an opportunity to, to ask questions or talk or whatever. But not in this particular.
I guess my concern is the unknowns about the property.
What is unknown to you?
The actual cost of these units, I mean.
Okay, we've got that down as a question.
But, you know, without something more concrete, I don't know.
Okay.
Because our properties budd each other as far as privacy. Any kind of a wall or something in there, leaving the trees for privacy? And then, of course, my concern, like everyone else, is traffic. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, Doug. Hi, my name is Marcus Toscano, I live right across from where you want to do that. So, I'm like everybody else, my concern is all the traffic that we have already, what's gonna happen. I know you said don't ask a question, but property is it gonna go down or up? He says it's gonna do senior citizens, but I don't, I don't believe that. And I honestly don't, so. Probably a lot of people running in and out. And I see a lot of stuff, I'm disabled, I see it outside my yard and there's cars going there thirty, forty miles, fifty miles down the road that don't even live there. And people that don't live there, they got things to say, people like guys that have been there twenty years, see it every day. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Uh, no, roll call.
No, that's.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's when we vote, right? Okay. Hey, thank you. Mr. Parkinson, you have things to answer or comments or whatever?
We will surely try to answer questions. Kind of already talked about the notice. So those who received a one-page underlined copy, wasn't from us. By law, we, again, are required to send it out three hundred feet away and all those did receive those. Anybody else that received it, unfortunately, I mean, that's good, I'm glad someone's out there doing it, but they need to make sure they're not being, how do you call it, prejudiced to one side. I mean, inform the neighbors not to give fear. Even the question of density, granted, a lot of it is, is really unknown until we start digging into the, the aspects of it, parking, how the building's gonna be laid out. I know they gave us kind of a concept, but, you know, again, that hasn't gone through the, the ordinance. If it was a single-family residential zone of R-18 like it is zone now, we could have ten, ten parcels, so you could have ten homes.
Good.
High-density, you can have twelve units per acre, so you have twenty-four homes, so fourteen more than the R-18 zone would allow. The amount of concrete, there was a concern there with water. Way the state and FEMA regulations are nowadays is, if the water rains on your property, you've gotta contain it and then discharge it slowly out into the system. It'd be the underground system, not the street. So, does it matter if it's a single-family residential community or not? They're gonna have to maintain the water that falls on those properties. So is there a detention basin? Most likely on the point eight-nine acres that's not big, you know, for another parcel, just like it would be in, in any complex. An HOA, which is a homeowners association, those residents would pay into a pool to maintain the roads, the landscaping, the parking lot and any buildings that's common, which is, you know, more than, most of us have to kinda do it ourselves that, that own homes. This, you pay into it, somebody else will do it. So nine times out of ten, the one that's not, it's fifty years old, maybe the HOA isn't working as well as it should, but those should be maintained because they have CCNRs of their own that they have to regulate and comply with. So as people move in and out, whether it be, you know, selling and stuff, those homes still have to be maintained. Cost of townhomes, I probably would just assume whatever market value, you know, depending on how big it is, if it's a two-bedroom townhome or a four-bedroom townhome, of course, the cost's gonna be completely different. So the market will dictate the, the, the cost. I did like, Ms. Nelson had talked about the affordable housing. That act has actually been in, in existence since two thousand. Just now, it's got some teeth in it to require cities to have that. It's a biannual or every two years you're supposed to update it. So I'm gonna probably contact Ms. Nelson and Ms. Johns to get some information, 'cause that, they didn't tell us how or what information to get, they just told us we had to have it. So knowing people in, in the Realtors and stuff, to have access to price, house pricings and stuff is, will only help us. Traffic, we hear this all the time, especially when it comes to rezoning or commercial businesses coming in. I'd probably say sixty percent of the traffic we see on the roads are not from those in the neighborhood. Whether it be Roy citizens themselves, as you notice, you know, all our east-west streets are, are packed and most of those aren't Roy citizens. They're Hooper or West Haven. You know, as we get commercial, it's on nineteen hundred West, they're gonna be coming. So traffic is always gonna be an issue. You know, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years ago, when you saw one car every five years, well, as, as places get built, homes get built, traffic increases. So everybody's cars that are there now is more than it was twenty, thirty, forty years ago. It's always an issue of people speeding. You know, the, the police can only be everywhere, you know, nowhere at once or everywhere at once. It's kinda hard to, you know, get them in the places that are being affected, but they, they are trying. So, you know, putting speed bumps in the roads would be a great idea, but when you do snow removal, it only breaks it up. So the, you know, where's the balance on that type of thing? Making smaller roads is probably the better option. Let people park on the roads. As you're driving down it, it feels squish, so you'd slow down a lot more. Privacy-wise, as Mr. Davis had asked, when there's a change in uses, multi-family to single-family, they would be required to have some sort of privacy fence. Now, if that's a six-foot opaque vinyl fence or a six-foot block wall, that's really up to the developer, but that would be a requirement for that, just like if it was commercial against residential. If it was single-family homes against single-family homes, there would be no requirement. So you'd actually probably get more privacy from this type of development than before. If senior citizens are the only ones allowed in it, they would just have to be part of the HOA in selling. You have to be of a certain age to buy into it. There are developments out there that are specifically for fifty-five and older. So those would be regulated by the HOA and, and those who develop it. I think I answered everybody's questions. Now, do you have questions?
Did you have any comments on forty-eight hundred and what's going on there?
Oh, forty-eight hundred South, yes. And even though it's the state, UDOT's not in charge of that road. So, because it's a, a city road, it's more UTA, Union Pacific in the city. They have met. They are looking to, to modify that, how, I'm not sure, I haven't been privy to that information, but I know they've, they've talked about it. The biggest thing is to eliminate, as you're heading west, that left-hand turn. So you'd go, if you wanted to go south on twenty-seven, you'd probably just have to do the roundabout, come back and turn right and go. But I haven't been told exactly what, that's just one option that I heard. Other than that?
That's it.
I think that's all the questions, so if you have additional?
Any, any ideas on how much those would sell for? Maybe Ms. Nelson could speak to that?
You, you need to come up to the microphone, we record everybody's wonderful words. So identify yourself again and.
Brenda Nelson, Harrisville, Better Homes and Gardens. Depending, the ones that Doug is looking at, anywhere between two fifty and two seventy-five, it's all gonna depend on what he puts in there and how he upgrades them and what gets approved by the council and the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Then, is there a motion?
Are any, any other questions?
Yes.
I said, are there any other questions?
Are there any other questions? I thought, I didn't see.
I, I do have a couple phone calls and emails that I did receive that I'd like to read. I can either read them or just give them just one I don't wanna read, 'cause it's in broken English, really sounds bad if I try to read it word for word. One is very concerned with the heavy traffic that's on there right now. This is from Robin Isit, who lives, I believe, at twenty-six ninety-three West, fifty-three fifty South. Blaming me that we only want tax money. You need to take a look at really, that really needs to be done and giving out building permits all over the place, but just against the development. Gary White, Gary and, I think it's Cinda? Anyway, at fifty-one, or fifty-eighty-one South, twenty-nine seventy-five West, would like to make it known that they're not supporting the new zoning for this property of multi-family. Please can keep it single-family residential. Mary Anderton, at fifty-one thirty-six South, twenty-nine seventy-five West, left a message saying against very high density. There's enough traffic already in the, in her neighborhood. And then Accord Domain, Domon, at twenty-six ninety-nine West, fifty-three fifty South, is against apartment complexes that bring in the wrong kind of people, lower-income people, which bring crime. Wanted to read those into the minutes.
Thank you.
I wanna, I.
Questions?
Not a question, actually, more of a discussion, because we can have a discussion. From what it looks like is, I was on the, the Planning Commission, I've been on the Planning Commission now for, going on three years. So we've, we've seen this property multiple times. I, I thought we denied it the first time, was I?
Yeah, we did.
I thought we had denied it.
Yeah, we did.
I thought the city, both us and the city council denied it. He said that the Planning Commission approved it, but I was trying to find it here just a minute ago.
We, we turned it down.
Yeah, it was five to two to deny.
Okay, that's what, that's what I thought, we had denied it. But however, on the, now what I'm seeing is, with it being the HOA and more of the details that we're seeing, I, I actually think that this actually might be a good idea. I understand the issues with traffic, but not everybody's leaving all at once, nobody ever leaves all at once. So, traffic, I don't think is gonna be that much of an issue. I mean, even if you built twenty-four, that would be fifty cars, not everybody leaves at the same time, so.
Well, and the other issue is, Roy is in serious need of townhomes. There are just zero, well, she mentioned the availability, and so that's part of our responsibility is to provide homes for those that want to live here. The same thing with apartments. Go in and look, Google apartments in Roy and see how many pop up, there's not that many, so we need to take a good, long look at this, because.
But I do want a covenant in there that it's not apartments. I would, I would do like we did before with the covenant. But I do want a covenant in there that it's not apartments. I would, I would do like we did before with a covenant that it be the, the condition, that it be townhomes.
You can make that as a condition.
Anybody else? Members of the board? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
Do we need to make two motions on this?
Yes, one for general plan and one for the zoning. And both of those be roll call.
Okay. I recommend that the planning commission approve the request to amend the general plan from median density to single-family residential to high, high-density, multiple-family residential. With the caveat that townhomes must be built. Call for a second.
I'll second your motion. Second the motion.
You'll second? Okay.
Roll call.
Roll call though.
We'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Karis?
Aye.
Commissioner Payne?
Aye.
Commissioner Nandel?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins?
Nay.
Commissioner Ashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Bills?
Aye.
Commissioner Brand?
Aye.
Passes six to one?
I'd like to recommend that we approve zoning map change from R-18, single-family residence, to R-3, multiple-family residential.
With townhome?
With townhome restriction.
Should I second for that?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Brand?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins?
Nay.
Commissioner Bills?
Aye.
Commissioner Payne?
Aye.
Commissioner Nandel?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Karis?
Aye.
Passes six to one. And this item? Make sure I have the right date. Is scheduled to go to city council on April third.
You have a time?
Six o'clock.
And just to comment so that everybody understands, we recommend to the city council, and you've heard what our recommendation is here. You need to go to the other meeting if you want to know more about it, and they will make the final decision. Then we'll move on to agenda item number four. This is a public hearing to consider a request to amend the zoning map from RE-20 residential estates to R-18, single-family residential for the property located at forty-four, approximately at forty-four fifty south, thirty-one hundred west.
Hang on just a second.
Yeah, we'll let everybody go. Scouts, we appreciate you being here. Thank you. So the proponent of this agenda item, will you please step forward if you are here?
Tanner here? Come on up.
Sorry, I need to hear a name.
Talk louder. I need to hear a name.
Did you say proponent or dentist or?
Forward. Is this your proposal?
I own this property. I've been there since...
Need your name and your address? And your, an address?
Forty-five fourteen south, thirty-one hundred west.
Go ahead.
I bought this property in seventy-three. Had horses there since seventy-four, or cattle. And my neighbors would like to see me move because of the horses. I don't want to improve it, the land, any, you know, right now. I don't want to build a better barn or anything because, because I need to move and move the horses out of there. So a fellow approached me, Tanner Skadden, and he was interested in buying the land. And I understand that he would be wanting to build four, five houses or something?
Don't know yet.
Something like that, anyway. And improve it all and I think he'd fit better into the neighborhood. The school kids walk into school, enjoy the horses. When I have a baby out there with their mother running around, they'll stop at the fence. But when you wing the baby and they making all this noise for two days, two nights. But I just want to improve it now, you know, for horses. I think it's time for me to move. And, and this is a good offer for me and a chance for me to sell it. And, but I thought he would be here tonight. I understand he's on business trip. And he had, he's not here tonight, so that's just all I got to say, that I'd like to sell it and get my horses out of Roy City. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Parkinson?
As I mentioned, this is just a property there on approximately forty-five hundred south and thirty-one hundred west. It's fairly large in the sense it's, you know, just over two acres. It's got a single-family home on it and some horses. It's currently zoned to RE-20. If I remember right, yep. The general land use map says it to be R-18, or at least a medium-density, single-family homes. So the request is to rezone it to R-18 to be conjunction with the, with the future land use map or the general plan. The area just across the street, a couple of those properties that have the pink outline and the ones that are green just to the, in your case, that way, to the audience. Was just, what, within the last year or so annexed into the city. So the zoning there was to keep the RE-20 atmosphere around it. Most of that is because of the power line corridor that goes down there. North-south is to the west or the east, west of what you see. There are some power lines that go east and west. They run along the longer piece that you see to the south of the one that's highlighted. We have seen a request to subdivide that property into six parcels. Not all of it is to be developed as such, but the applicant, Mr. Fuller, is still in the process of getting those plans approved. So the applicant would like to rezone the property to be consistent with the general plan and to have it R-18. Staff would recommend approval of this as well.
Any questions?
Is this property, it's right across from the church, correct?
Yes. Well, down the street.
It's down the street from the church? Okay.
Yeah. The church is kind of farther north than the map shows. You got that Baptist church?
Okay, okay.
Church is north.
Well, I just know the Alpine church is right, right near there. And I live like three blocks from this property, so.
In the future land use map, the church is in blue.
Okay, okay. Now, now I see that. Okay. Yeah, because I live right up, basically right up near the church there.
And is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I actually make the motion that we open the public hearing for the property located approximately forty-four fifty south, thirty-one hundred west.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone here want to talk about this matter?
You might already know me. My name's Doug Terry. My address is twenty-five oh-nine west, fifty-one seventy-five south. I've known Mr. Franzen for numbers of years. I also know Mr. Fuller that owns the property next to it. I actually farmed the property next to that property. I think this is a wonderful idea since Richard has horses. The neighbors probably don't enjoy him having horses there much anymore. Richard used to own eight acres just east of him also and run a lot of cows there. Since then, the city's kind of grown in around him and he's sold some property off, so I'm all for this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to speak? Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Okay, my name's Brandy Erickson. I live, I guess, just east of that. I've been here eighteen years fighting with Fuller because we just love him. Why not build every speck of dirt? Why not? I mean, that's perfect. I wouldn't mind homes on that piece of dirt and whatever, but five? Seriously, five. Are we going to do a plot map? I mean, or, you know, is that what it's going to be? Because that is a road thirty-one hundred. It's getting busier and busier, just like everybody said. I don't know. I've been in Roy my whole entire life. And I have never seen it as bad as it is now. I mean, we have all these old homes. The, of course, the real estate agent's going to come up here and go, oh, we need these, we need these. These older homes are not getting sold in Roy. I live in a rental neighborhood, which is so sad because I've raised my kids there. I'm here with my neighbors. We've raised our kids there and now they're rentals. Tell me why I should stay in Roy City. I've been here my whole life. Tell me why I should stay. You just want to build on every speck of dirt in this city and you don't care. Let's just bring more people in. I mean, that's how I feel about it. I look at it and I think that's great. He wants to sell it, that's fine. But Robert Fuller's been trying to puzzle this piece behind us for so long. But how, I mean, build the dang road through. We could care less. We fought it and fought it. When we moved in, we were told the power lines are there, there's no way we can build. Great, wonderful. We bought the house, everything, it's been nice. Well, eighteen years later, he's still trying to puzzle pieces together to build back there. We've wanted to purchase land behind there. Do you think he'll let us purchase it? No. He tried to ask so much for that land. Roy City wanted to purchase it from him. He wanted a million dollars for that piece of land. Give me a break. I mean, it's always in limbo, in a fight, and it needs to get planned out. And I would love a stop to this. If you want to put the road through there, great. But, I mean, you're going to go and look at five homes in that little piece of property?
It's two acres.
This is just for Franzen, not Fuller's?
So you're going to put five homes in that little tiny property right there?
It's two acres.
No idea.
Okay, that's what I'm saying is maybe planning something a little bit smaller, maybe two homes that could go side by side there to come out onto the road. But, I mean, sitting here listening to this whole planning commission, like we had to stop on forty-eight hundred because it's a racetrack. They come down there, you guys planned a roundabout, it's great. It's, you know what? It's great. But with the two lanes, it's a racetrack. And it seemed great when you planned it, but it's not working out. My husband had to stop and literally open his door so the car that went behind us, around us, didn't hit kids in the crosswalk. They're going across the road. It, something needs to be done. And we can keep building and building and building, but we're not solving any problems. It's just another speck of dirt. Let's put more homes on it. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, my name's Tracy Jackson. I live at forty-four eighty south, twenty-nine fifty west, just east of the property. I don't have a problem with you changing it to R-18 to the single-family residential. My problem, my issue is building five houses on that. There's not, the road, where's the road going to go? The only road you have to get to that is thirty-one hundred. Are you going to put flag lots in back there? I mean, a single residential zoning is great. He can sell his property. I don't have a problem with that. I drive by it every day. I know what he's talking about. But I just don't understand how you can get that many homes in there and where are the roads going to go? The only road you have to get to it is thirty-one hundred. That's it. There's no other access to his property. So when you go to zone it, just, I want you to think about that because we definitely don't want more flag lots back there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, Mr. Parkinson, did you have answers to any questions?
Well, I'll try. As to how many parcels are going to be in there, it is completely unknown. I don't have a subdivision plat in front of us to be able to figure out what their plans are to do. Is it, you know, with two acres, R-18, you can put ten homes. But you're going to minus, you know, a cul-de-sac or whatever road they're going to, they're put in that access those homes. Yes, access onto thirty-one hundred west is, will be what is going to happen, very similar to the neighborhood to the back. They have access to thirty-one hundred west. If Mr. Fuller does finally put a road through that connects forty-six hundred south to the neighborhood, that will alleviate some issues on that end, but it, you know, it, I don't want to I don't know how to even say it, but don't want to hurt anybody's feelings when, because they were pretty much blaming you guys for all of this. You know, the roundabout was not planned by the planning commissioner or the planning staff. It was done by the traffic engineer, public works and the council. So we need to make sure we're focusing our energy in those places where it needs to be. Planning commission is recommend, a recommending body for a lot of things. They're not necessarily the ones that make the decisions. To build every speck of dirt, it's the property owner's right to do, to do this. Right now, they could, you know, subdivide it into four homes on an RE-20 zone. So, you know, they can subdivide, just like all property owners or farmers that are tired of farming, sell it, it gets subdivided and people move in. It's not our intention, but it's more of how to, what's the best development types in the areas that we've got. You know, as farms move out or farmers move out and people subdivide it, it's, you know, it's for families. And that's mainly what Roy City is, is a bedroom-type community. So it, you know, just would follow in suit with what's been going on. Flag lots, there could only be no more than two per entry, but I don't think that's what their, their plans are. Again, I haven't seen it and nor is it required by our ordinance to provide the subdivision plat before, you know, the rezoning. So there are a lot of, yes, there are a lot of questions, but just like the, the future land use map, the request is not out of order.
It fits within the demand.
It fits, you know, other than the long parcel that's to the south that Mr. Fuller owns, there's single-family homes to the north and to the east. Yes, there's some on the west side. Those are a lot older homes and those will start selling and probably being subdivided as well. They are confined though because of the power lines. You can't build anything underneath that. I think I answered all the questions.
I have a question and just because I didn't pay attention when you were talking.
Well, then that's not my fault.
I didn't say it was. How many, how many homes could be built using R-18?
Well, eight thousand square feet divided by, in this case, forty-three five sixty is four point five, four point four five? Or no, five point four, sorry.
So five or six houses?
Five homes per acre with some leftover land per acre.
And right now, if it stayed at RE-20, they could divide it up and put four houses on it. Is that correct? So we're talking about one house or maybe two houses if we?
If you leave it, if it stays the same.
If it stays the same, okay. And also, it's currently zoned in the, in the current master plan to be...
Similar zoning that's around it.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So we're not talking about what houses are going on there now. We're just talking about to rezonate so he can sell it if the developer decides. He has to come back and get that approved at a later date.
Correct. The subdivision will actually come to this body again.
So that's out of the picture right now. It's just if he can sell his land at that zone.
He's got someone interested and it needs to be that zone for him to buy it.
So right now, there's no proposal or anything of houses or how many or lot size, cul-de-sacs, anything. That would have to come back.
Yeah, the lot size, we know if it gets rezoned R-18, that's the lot size.
But then minus the cul-de-sac and all of that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions by any members of the commission?
No, I just want to say that, you know, I do understand the, the traffic issues. And I actually do live in that neighborhood. I live right off of, off of thirty-one hundred. So I do understand your, your concerns. With that being said, Mr. Chair, I do make a recommendation that...
With that being said, Mr. Chair, I do make a recommendation that we, I recommend approval to the city council that we amend the zoning map from RE twenty residential estates to R one eight, single-family residential for the property located at approximately forty-four fifty south, thirty-one hundred west.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Commissioner Bills?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Payne?
Aye.
Chair Brand?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Nandell?
Aye.
Commissioner Karas?
Aye.
As you said, zero. This item will also be on the April third city council.
We'll move on to item five, a request for approval of the exterior enhancements of the Wendy's building located at approximately nineteen twenty-three west, fifty-six south.
Nobody from Wendy's? It was mailed in, so I don't, I don't know who it is.
And so, it got mailed in? Okay. We don't have a, Mr. Parkinson?
Are you here for it?
Yes, sir.
Well, then, come on up.
Oh, come on up.
You're the next contestant.
I don't know if you want to be the contestant.
Please state your name and your address.
My name is Robert Rothwell and I live at twenty-seven fifteen Alton Avenue, Dallas, Texas. I want to talk about apartments and traffic.
No, we don't. All right, tell us what you got.
Well, we're doing, we're doing a exterior refresh on this building. We're not closing the building for very long. It'll be interior with more modern furniture, more seating, more Wi-Fi seating. It's going to be a lot more modern. Most of you have probably seen that Wendy's, there's one in my hometown in Arlington, Texas that was built forty years ago and it looks like that. So, Wendy's has a new standard and the gold that wraps around the top of the building currently will be replaced with this dark bronze, basically a chocolate brown, kind of the same color as the light standard out here in the parking lot.
Pass it, pass it around.
All the lighting will be upgraded to LED, exterior and interior. And the biggest change is you'll see on the front, that big red, they call it a blade and it's attached to the building, it's wood frame and it's covered with ACM, just a composite metal as a rain shield. And it gives them opportunity for signage and it, it sticks above the parapet about twenty-six inches. That's the biggest change. All the metal, downspouts, everything will be painted the same color as the dark bronze and awnings will be placed over the pickup and, uh, pay windows. So, really, the biggest change is just aesthetics. They will change the lighting in the kitchen area, but the drive-thru will stay open through most of all the construction.
What he said.
So, this isn't going to be a, a tear down like some of the, some of the ones they've done where they tore the whole thing basically down and left about eight feet on it?
No. This is, Wendy's has two, when a new franchisee bought it and when a new franchisee buys Wendy's, Wendy says you have to do this.
Yep.
And this is, it's just called a refresh. Even a remodel, we don't tear down the building. I've done one scrape since, I've done forty of these and I've done one scrape in Pennsylvania and that was it. But the, the structure won't change a bit. It's just the face-up, the glass won't change and it'll look a lot better, in my opinion.
It better after you spent.
So, the color board that you just saw and the materials, I mean, the Wendy's art is, is what it is. It doesn't necessarily meet every aspect of our current zoning requirements, but at the time the building was built, it did. Adding that new blade does help the front to give it more depth, more variety of, of materials and colors and stuff. The colors themselves meet the ordinance, so staff would just recommend approval of the refresh, I like that word, of the exterior building.
Okay.
The only construction changes on the exterior is if there's issues with the accessibility into the building. And we'll, we'll, if we need to do new curb cuts or accessible parking spots or whatever that takes, we, we'll do that. And owners, they'll repaint the parking, they'll fix any holes in the, in the drive-thru and everything else and put new menus up. And that's basically the extent of it.
How long are they expected to be closed for during that? Do you know?
The dining room, it'd probably be about six weeks. And the, that's just, they redo all the finishes and the, of the customer experience, you know, the dining room, the service area and the restrooms get whole finished, you know, new floor, new paint, new wall coverings and the furnishings. They're pretty nice. I mean, they put a lot of televisions inside, they put a fake fireplace in it for no reason. I don't get that. I mean, it's a real electric fireplace, they just don't plug it in or wire it up.
Okay.
It's just for aesthetics. But there'll be a wall kind of the same color on the inside and there'll be a community table on one side of it with the television. On the other side, there's soft seating and that's where the fireplace is. Otherwise, kind of being set up as Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi restaurants too, so.
Okay. Well, that's the world we live in.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any questions, just let me know. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Need a motion?
Do I have to make all the motions around here?
I, I made one, yeah.
Well, I'll make another one. So, Mr. Chair, I do recommend approval of the exterior, what, what was his word?
Refresh.
Refresh of the Wendy's building located at approximately nineteen twenty-three west, fifty-six hundred south with any conditions outlined by the building officials.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number six, commissioners' minutes.
You're going to remodel?
Refresh. What do we do?
Nothing.
Huh?
I don't have anything.
Do we have any commissioners' minutes or anything?
Well, that's you.
That's us, then.
Mine staff update, I.
Do we have any updates?
And, well, the last rezone that we talked about on four thousand south of Midland Drive for.
Yeah, council turned it down.
Yeah, the council. From community commercial to R four, the council denied it five-zero. The mayor did approach me afterwards and was kind of perplexed of how the planning commission, who voted six to one to approve and the council voted five-zero to deny, how we're so far apart from each other. So, we probably will be having more work sessions to, to get together so we're all on the same page, at least have an idea of, you know, why, how come, what for.
Well, I think part of the problem there is that we have to do what the law states, they can do whatever they want.
Well, I mean, you can still make the recommendation to deny, but I think the planning commission understood kind of what the applicant was wanting to do and the city council may not have. He has approached some of the, the council members, so it may be back on this next agenda as a discussion item, so he can bring in more of the, the ideas of what he was having. So, you'll, we'll see. I, you know, it may or may not happen, I don't know. Budgetary-wise, just to let everybody know, last year in our budget, we had, the council had approved sixty-five thousand dollars to, to upgrade or redo our, I like the word, refresh our general plan, which is, which isn't enough to, to actually do it for the size of the city we are. So, staff had, had applied for a grant from Wausau State Front Regional Council for an additional fifty thousand dollars to give it more, more money to do that. I received today word that we were approved for that.
Way to go.
But I got sixty-five thousand dollars from them, not fifty.
Good news.
You're expecting a raise?
Yes.
Okay.
Your paperwork must have been done well.
You guys could do it for me, but you can't. So, the general plan will, will start, we won't get that money until July first. So, I've requested that the council just can, just keep the money and move it to the next year and then we'll start updating the general plan. So, got a lot of work ahead of us.
So, you need to hire an outside consultant?
I'm going to hire, yes, that's a lot of work.
Okay.
So, if I had another staff person, maybe I would try it, but it's just too much for one person with the day-to-day stuff. Other than that, the senior living center, assisted living center there on fifty-five hundred south, across from Kent, is underway.
So.
So much, we're getting complaints from the neighbors, so.
So, it's going well.
Because of the dirt or the dust?
Dirt and they're, to meet grade of fifty-five hundred south, they've had to build it up a bit.
Yeah.
So, there's some, some concern there. So, we're going to try to talk with the, the builders and say, can you put some more landscaping back there, just give more privacy?
Yeah.
So, other than that, car wash here on nineteen hundred, they're starting. Midland Drive one is almost done.
Yes.
So.
So, we'll have clean cars, but not affordable housing?
Yep. And on, on that note, we do have three interns right now that are gathering data for me for that affordable housing plan.
Good.
So, I'll, I'll get her in touch with the.
I'm sorry, I just have to ask, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is affordable housing for someone that's on nine-hundred-dollar social security?
Well, again, it's, what's affordable to Roy? So, we have to look at, you know, Roy City in itself, median income and housing in, you know, those kind of things. We can't say affordable as to Ogden or affordable as to Hooper, it's got to be Roy. When I was an intern, I interned for Bountiful City back in nineteen ninety-eight and started their affordable housing plan for Bountiful.
Yeah.
I think the cheapest home for affordability was three-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
But for Bountiful.
That was affordable.
That was affordable. Not for most of us.
Yeah.
But.
Okay.
So, we'll, we're in that, that process, so.
Is there anything else the commissioners want to say? I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn. Second.
All in favor?